Okay, it's Wednesday, September 6th, and we're gonna start the Town of Sangaville Select Board Meeting, and it's four o'clock. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Bible, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, approval of the minutes A. It's a special select board meeting of August 23rd, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second. All in favor? All three in favor? Item three, review of treasurer's warrants payroll 71, 72, and 74. Accounts payable 70, 73, and 75.
Make motion to approve AMVs ready.
Second.
All in favor? Item four is open session. This is where we let guests speak. We have guests. Do either of you wanna speak?
I'm Sam Hutchins.
Okay. Oh, hi, Sam. Pleased to meet you. You and I have spoken a couple times.
Yes, we have.
Sam is the one that expressed an interest in the Old Town Hall. And I didn't know that you were coming, so I didn't warn them, but that's fine. Is there anything you wanna say today?
No.
Okay. We may have some questions today.
That's my question today.
Yep. Okay. All right. And did you have anything?
I have your answer.
Okay. Item five, old business, Town Hall building.
Yeah, so for the board, if we go to the next divider, we'll open up. You see the Facer page will is obviously the alpha paragraph is for the Town Hall building, or the theater is also known as. And then second is Center Pond Hud House, which we all, the four of us are very well aware of, but we can have that open discussion. So I'll just go into Mr. Hutchins' letter to the town discussing this. So on the Facer slide, we have, you know, this as one of the proposed courses of action, which would be to sell to a private corporation for improvements to have as an apartment building. So then also I put into thoughts and concepts for other courses of action, so we're not just going down one rabbit hole. Would be, is there an option for 501(c)(3) nonprofit purchase? Develop that into what could be mindful living, health in space, anything academic or education centers, youth center, rec center, and something that is, you know, down that line. I've been abreast to some of the offers in the past to some nonprofits or 501(c)(3)'s, some of the do we want, don't we want? But I just wanted to table that so that, you know, the constituents and taxpayers have more than, well, the four of us are just decided to do this. I guess is why I wanna have another option. That's not my personal opinion. That's just me putting courses of action out on the table.
And we also had started the ball rolling on just a general feeler with real estate agents about possible other commercial interests.
Sure.
For very much the same reason you just articulated. We didn't really wanna go to the town. Somebody reasonably would raise their hand and say, did you see if there was any other interests?
Right.
And I don't know how far we got with reaching out to commercial real estate. So I don't know if anyone has looked at the building or offered any alternatives, but we did bring that up probably a couple months ago?
Yeah.
A few times.
Actually, right after Sam made his offer, because we really didn't wanna go in with just one perspective.
Sure.
Well, actually, we actually see about getting a realtor to come in and give an idea. Is it even marketable?
Right.
With the condition and things like that? And if so, what their fault?
So there may be some history on that in a file? There may not be. I don't know.
Okay. So it sounds like I owe you three some analytics on, you know, what is the economic income from taxes? What is the economic impacts if we 501(c)(3)? You know, what is it that Mr. Hutchins is offering? You know, he's very clear in his letter. What he intends to do is...
Yeah, an idea of what the revenue that, because it obviously doesn't generate revenue now.
I don't know of any nonprofit that's expressed an interest.
In that's...
At this time, anyway.
Right.
No, we haven't. Yeah.
But I tabled it so that we're not pigeonholed as...
Yeah, no, but we've actually taken that a step further because the Historical Society, that's a nonprofit. They've expressed interest in the building being restored in the past. And obviously, we can't do it as a board.
Sure.
But we've actually told them that. You guys come up with a plan. We would be in favor of basically giving you the building. If you had a plan of as far as to go to Town Meeting, we would be in support of that.
Sure.
And they don't have any interest in doing that, so.
I think, to be fair, I'll just try to do some of the numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, if we could just check the boxes, that'd be great.
Check the box. That way, you know... So what is the revenue income for us, not just as income tax, as property tax, right? If Mr. Hutchins buys it? But also, what is the local economic impacts and contributions of four apartments with two people living in them? You know, with A Robinsons, you know? What is that contribution to us at a local fiscal amount?
Sure. Really, for me, the bigger thing, and I think it'll help drive it home, it's kind of what Mike said, that Mr. Hutchins makes that apartments, you're bringing in X amount more people that are gonna go to the town office, register cars, register trailers, snowmobiles, whatever. And that's real money that stays in our town. You know, I mean, I know if he does it, it helps Robinsons, but that doesn't help all of us.
Right.
Whereas registering vehicles, that does.
Right.
So that's really, for me, the kind of an estimate number.
And the intent is to keep it in some form of historical appearance. So you're not losing the historical value, you know? So I owe everybody pros cons.
Sure.
And if we do this, then that way, if nobody comes to the table, you know, then we've done our due diligence.
Yep.
And offered what is the most feasible and economical and best course for the town going forward.
And at this time, the question is whether, at one point during this meeting, I think that we need to discuss a special Town Meeting that we were gonna have prior to our annual Town Meeting, because this is something that if, that we wanna get prepared for a special, I would say, right?
We, yeah, we need to, I think the only way you get to a date is to pick a date.
Yeah.
So we gotta get going on that.
Right.
So, I mean, maybe a window?
Right. But if we don't pick it, we're gonna keep kicking this special Town Meeting down. So and...
And some of that ties into, I mean, I saw the Senator Collins thing. It made me think of the grant money that might be available for the new Town Office. So that's really under the new...
Right. But I just wanna get it in our thinking about it throughout this meeting, that things that were going to begin to gather up.
And this would be on there.
Yes. Yes. So all of what you're saying with regard to your, the work that you want, ground worker you wanna do on this would need to be completed.
The third, fourth order of effect, which would be the new building.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Correct.
Here's, here's what's the still need on us spending rent in this building as opposed to having something we already own.
Yep.
Yep. And these two aren't linked necessarily, but if we're gonna have a special, we might as well be prepared on this as well as the new.
Absolutely.
I wanna get a date set too, because, I mean, he has put an offer on the table on the building.
Yeah.
I don't wanna see this until next year.
Yeah, you're gonna hold it for two years.
I don't wanna do that anymore. You know what I mean? We need to...
Totally respect that.
Get an answer for him is equal for what we need to do ourselves.
Yep. Is 30 days from now to...
That's...
That's aggressive. But you've got a lot of, I think there's a lot of things on the new part.
Well, that takes us into the first week of October. I don't wanna go much later.
No.
Right? It's gonna be tight, but...
I mean, we can...
Forty-five days?
I mean, and the latest window, first week of November? I mean, you get, after that, you're bad, like Thanksgiving, Christmas.
It's gotta be in there, but I wouldn't push for 30. I would give it 45 or 60 days. I would 45, yeah.
And typically, we do it on, what, Thursday night? Or Thursday night, we usually do it. So do we wanna, do we wanna pick a date and start?
I'm subject to...
The 12th, the 19th, and then the 26th.
12th is a Plan and Board meeting next month, so...
Okay. October, that's October.
Yep.
12th, okay, so...
I mean, it doesn't have to be on a Thursday.
Right.
I mean, we used to do meetings on Saturdays.
Plan and Board can move.
And the Plan and Board could move. But that's your window.
On the 12th or the 19th, but that's what...
19th is 45 days. Or 43.
There you go. Take the 19th.
So is that a Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah.
Sell that to the butcher in the store?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, as long as the building's available.
Yeah, that's the next, that would be the next thing to check is the community room at Grace Bible.
And then...
And I, now we're really getting wishful. But between now and then, I would like to have a workshop on the new building.
Right.
And whether people attend or not, at least we had one. So...
So what are we saying, October?
Yeah, the...
19th.
19th.
Paul Davis usually moderates. You might wanna reach out to him, see if he's available for that as well.
Yeah, he runs all of those steps.
Yep, those are the moving parts.
Right. Right.
And then the new building workshop you would like to have...
I'd like to get one in before, maybe the week before. And I think we could hold that here. I mean, where would you hold it?
Yeah, here's, this is, yeah.
Yep. If we had to move the tables out and put more chairs in, we could do that.
And if you, if you absolutely need more room, the babies can be accessible if need be, but...
Yeah, we don't really wanna get tied into that, although... We should be able to make this work. We've got plenty of chairs if we have to move tables out.
We have another 75 chairs.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is probably the most people I've seen here for...
The workshop, yeah, workshops typically aren't very well attended, but this is a lot of interest as far as...
No, and I think, well, I mean, to get this done in 45 days as far as detail wise, do we have, do we have to have more meetings for us as well? Or are we just gonna bounce back?
Whatever we need, we will have.
But that's what I'm saying. You should just plan on a couple of workshops and just get them done. And then you can actually advertise them that way, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, in other words, attach them to our meeting. Have a workshop or work. The only thing with that is, I'm thinking actively reaching out. We, all of us know people who are really engaged in the community. And so we could provide you with, you know, you definitely need to reach out to these folks and tell them that we're gonna have a meeting regarding this topic.
Yeah, and they're good at deciding who's the reason to do that.
And we can do, we can also participate in that, but we kinda put together a list of people that will spread the word.
Sure.
So...
But I mean, the only difference between our meeting and a workshop, we can't vote. And if our sole thing is, is we're talking about...
Yeah, and there's no action.
There's not gonna be an action for us. It is what it is. I mean, we're just discussing a floor plan or a layout or this or that, or it's nothing is in stone spending wise. So it doesn't matter if we talked about it in a workshop or not.
Yeah, the workshops are just information.
I'll start working. I'll start.
Yeah, and I don't know if you had new Town Hall on this agenda, because we've kind of taken over your...
Well, this is the third one. I rolled that into the conversation, so I think...
So, yeah, that's, and along that lines, the plan that we got from Plymouth has, I really think that you and your team, the clerk, the assistant clerk, you're gonna have a much better feel for how that layout should be done.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's just how, what much space you need and how that...
So once you guys reconfigure that, it goes back to Plymouth. They'll, they'll do what you ask them to do. That's what we should have to present at our, at our meetings.
So I'll talk to the two over the next week or so.
Sure.
You know, especially Sam, because that's the first person that anybody sees, you know? And how do we make that a comfortable environment in working and ergonomic and all that good stuff?
Yeah. And I'm sure they put emphasis on areas that you guys might not, you switch it around. So that's, we need that so that you can get it back to them. They're not always really quick.
That's why I'm worried about it.
So we need to really, once you've got that, you gotta stress to them, this has gotta come back.
Okay. And then if that's for, for the paragraph alpha, we'll go to Bravo, which is Center Pond Hud House, which, you know, most...
Once, are we all good as far as the building? So, I mean, if Sam wants to stay, that's great, but...
Yeah.
If we don't have any questions, we're not wanting to know that.
You don't have to stay if you don't want to.
It's all, it's up to you.
So, yeah, so we're good.
We're good. And if we have any questions, or if any of these other actions are gonna develop into an alternative, you'll know about it.
Okay. And I'll have to reach out to you for rental incomes and stuff like that.
Estimates.
Estimates, how much you're gonna be, you know, and improvements and, yeah, some of that stuff. So there's things that I'm gonna have to call you, your number's on the letter, so I can just, I'll call you and then make...
Your name?
Patrick.
Patrick.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Very pleased to do it.
The second is the letter from Senator Collins' office about the HUD. We understand it's, you know, they're not doing any. My concern is environmental impacts to Center Pond. Is there lead, asbestos, any petroleum leaking into the ground? Turpentine, has anybody, you know, decided that they wanted to store that instead of trying to get rid? So those are things that concern me. I'd like to table, you know, maybe the concept. Lance goes out there, does a walkthrough, looks, what are the environmental impacts and concerns? And then how do we start finding some of this hazmat or some of this environmental impact?
Has it been any response to the letter that we got? Because I think that would be, honestly, I think that's the first thing we should do, because that, that was a generic, high level...
Very high, yeah.
Email that I didn't really, and I think that's the reply it should be is, there, there was no part of that that really, to me, had any weight to it. They're, they're not working on this. They haven't done anything with this. This thing is just floating there.
Well, it got to, you know, an SES directorate level, I'm sure, and then, because that office didn't call one of the worker bees. That office called an SES or GS-15 of some sort and said, you know? So I, I will do the response to, you know, maybe I'll put my concerns in there. I'll give it to you three to proofread. We're good with what's going out, you know, and then I'll send it.
I would just, basically what you just said. I would reply to that and let them know that the fines are coming.
Yeah.
So, yeah, has Lance given him a notice yet?
No. So, so I, when I talked to him, I, he was in yesterday. I didn't get a chance to really sit down and talk to him about this, but my concern is that we need to identify these while simultaneously communicating to, you know, through Senator Collins' office or straight to the HUD person, representative, saying, you know, there's environmental impacts and we're gonna start finding you until this is resolved.
Yeah.
But I want Lance to do some writing up and then...
Sure.
And then we bring this into the general fund.
Yep.
Yeah.
Whatever the fines are, general fund. I don't see any other financial allocation for it other than that.
No.
No, that's where they go.
Yeah.
We've actually never done one yet.
We've never yet collected any fines. But, yeah, it's time to start doing it.
Yeah, well, and these pockets are, it's not questionable that they can pay it, so.
Well, the problem is, is it's great in theory that we're doing this, but all we're doing is finding ourselves. It's, we're paying the fine.
From 50,000 feet.
Sure. But I'm just saying that the finding mechanism for them doesn't have much weight because it doesn't come from them.
Right.
So I know this is what we have to do, and but it's...
We really want them just to put the place up for sale. Just put it up for sale.
Something.
Yeah, and that problem will be solved.
Right.
Give us a grant to do something with it then.
Yeah, we would, yeah, we would put it up for sale.
Right. So that's, you know, that's where I would like to go, the direction I would like to go. And if we're all in agreement, then I don't think we, you know, we can move on to the next if everybody wants to.
That sounds good.
Item six, new business. I just, to put on record, and Mike, you have them as the accounts that I hold that we changed from Lorna, it's in your folder there. You have changing, changing the name of the account managers for, for some of the CDs and bank accounts from Lorna to me, but I wanted to just put that on, on record and, you know, everybody's acknowledged.
So that's not something we have to sign, right?
No. It's already signed.
It's in effect.
We signed it so that...
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So the next item is gonna be broadband. Jack Kluki from Dover got ahold of me, sent me an email saying that there's, I want a letter of support, or they're requesting a letter of support for a grant to get Dover in Sangaville some fiber optics. I put the email traffic in here for everybody to see. It's at no cost to the town. It's just, it's a letter of support for right now to support a grant request to upgrade infrastructure in Sangaville. What I did do after...
What did we just do?
I don't, I think Lorna did discuss this with us, and we said, yeah, that sounds great, but perhaps she never followed through.
No, no, I mean, what just came through town?
Oh.
I was gonna say, you got brand new fiber cable.
We got brand new fiber optic cable in Sangaville.
Yeah, they wanna expand the footprint.
They wanna expand the footprint to, and then you see the map and the areas of the map and the emails. I have a better copy of the map. I'll try to get it updated for you, but so that we can overlay it to the streets.
So the dots are...
The areas that they want upgraded, but as I realized that when this printed out, it didn't print out. And so I'll, I'll forward you the email so you have it from the first...
This isn't accurate, because this right here already has it.
Yeah, that Doughty Hill.
This up here has it.
Are these all people that already have it, perhaps?
No, because it's not out into the pond yet.
No, because the email said that it's, these are the locations.
I, I don't think they're up to speed.
So I have requested for some more information on this. I just wanna know if we can support the letter, you know, or draft a letter of support. It's, we already have the example, it's in here, of what they're looking for, so you can see the verbiage of what they're saying. And then it just comes from my signature block to say that the Town of Sangaville supports the request for grant.
And no cost to us.
And I made that very clear that, you know, there is no cost to us. You know, we're not gonna come down this road and find out, oh, $3,000 later.
Yeah, because the last time this came around, the grant was for a percentage of the total.
Right.
The only thing too, this is talking about consolidated communication. This is not talking, that's not who we have just put on new fiber optic in there, is it?
I, 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 I don't know.
I, yeah, I don't know either. I have no idea.
Well, I'll school myself a little bit more.
If there are no funds at risk for the town, and it's totally, you know, predicated, I guess of the grant could be a state grant, it's probably federal money distributed by the state. I can't imagine why we would object to it. But the last time this came around, I thought there was a formula. You know, you get half the money or two thirds of the money or something like that.
I'll, I'll make sure before I put any signature on, on any of it, that I confirm with the three of you that there is no commitment of funds.
This push for, I mean, this is kind of off Sangaville situation, but this sort of technology is really starting to become obsolete because of the satellite systems that are available. So I, I'm sure there's gonna be a push to get this money out before you don't need it. But it doesn't matter. If it's free money and Sangaville can get it, then we're probably open to it, but...
My only, my, my number one thing about this is like, the company that just run all kinds of fiber, that was through a grant process, that was for a private business. And now this looks like to me that we're talking about another grant process that's going to benefit another business. You know what I mean? So why are we supporting a business over another business or, you know what I mean? That's, and maybe that's irrelevant, but I just, to me, it's kinda, it's not like you're trying to develop, you know, county infrastructure.
Yeah.
You're not. You're, you're signing a grant to benefit a private company.
Yeah, they call them one offs.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but the service is something that your infrastructure would theoretically benefit from. There's no question about that, but...
Well, let me do some more homework.
The key is, yeah, if it's truly no match, no guarantees, I can't imagine we would want to support that.
Okay. So that's a do-out for Patrick.
Yes. Where are you on that?
So...
Okay. I'm just kidding. Okay?
Yeah.
So those dots are where they wanna...
I don't know what to...
Let me dig through it.
Okay, okay.
And then, and then get you a definitive answer, because it has been kind of vague on my end getting what it is they want.
Okay.
So, and then somehow we got two, two maps in here. So then, I'll, I'll give that this week some, some clear, direct, and concise what is actually happening.
I mean, kind of, if you follow the dots, it kind of, this must be 23, this main line.
Yes.
And then this is Silver's Mills. So it looks like it kind of stops. This is 23. This comes down to Silver's Mills Townhouse here, I'm guessing.
Yeah, well, I owe you, Dylan, a better map, because I didn't realize actually that that printed off that bad.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm kind of betting that those dots represent consolidated communications, existing...
Yeah.
Internet. Is what I'm gonna guess, is what those dots. And by introducing this infrastructure, because that's what I'm saying, because I know the fiber optics currently is already running by here, but it's by the other business.
Oh, that's Tom Doughty Hill.
No, that's, he's, that's, yeah, that's my pond.
Oh, 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 so that's more, that's more...
Yeah, he's saying it was over here, so that loop they don't have, because that's already done. But I know some of the people that live over here across from Cleve Farms, they have it.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Whoops, sound yours.
Yeah, I brought that for you.
So next is the purchase of the corner over here beside the redemption center for $1,500. I'm tabling it just...
Yeah, I'm not sure that...
We don't own it.
Well, we don't own as much as he may think we own. Well, we don't own as much as he may think we own.
Um.
It, it, it might be worth a call to him to show him what we actually own.
I like the green space.
I hate green space, but. Green space does not generate this town any tax base, but if you look at those two laws and you read those two deeds. The way I read that, what is physically cleared on that law is actually owned by Numerall. What the town of Sangaville owns is the little tiny box in the corner where the consolidated communications.
It's just a tiny little, and it, it's.
I try, I don't think he understands what he's offering.
What he thinks he's buying, I'm very confident that Numerall owns.
He thinks he's buying the whole thing except for what the signs it's on.
Right.
Correct, and I, I don't believe that's the case.
I don't believe it is.
The whole law is owned by Numerall and the town retained that little footprint to put that consolidated communication box in that's over there.
So.
Anyway, we need to know.
If you look at the map and you read the deeds, it's.
Well, so the next map.
Oh, there we go.
You can see.
There we go.
There's our little dot.
Their, their thinking is for sale is in paint when in, in actuality is the eighty-one dash one is the uh, what we own.
Correct. I believe that is the way I read it. I could be wrong, but that's how I.
Is that how you read it?
Well, I didn't read it, but I started putting a lot of two and two together and.
That's what we need to discern.
Walked over there and was like.
Cause if he still wants that.
Well, I can tell you, if you look at the, if you look at the big square, the tax card says it's Numerall period without.
Yeah, no, I, I totally get it.
So what's colored in pink is Numerall.
Yeah.
And, and what he is offering is on that, this little tiny, tiny, that square right there.
Well, he thinks he's offering, cause he thinks we own the big square.
Okay.
You can't park the car on it.
No.
No, it's literally, it's.
Yeah, it's the corner.
It's, well, cut their hole off and get rid of that box. That's it. That's why they retained it, just because they need to put that there.
So this is inaccurate. What he's saying map twenty-three lot eighty-two is, is we don't own.
Eighty-two dash one.
Yeah, he's offering it by something we don't own.
He may take that to someone else.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Very, yeah, you'll see when you look at it.
Sold.
Okay, sold. Offering money to the wrong owner. There we go. Okay.
I like free chicken. So. Uh, the next is, is the fire department um. Chief, uh, we, we've worked together on some thoughts and concepts over the past week. Uh, one is an SOP for response to incidents that he and I wanna develop to provide to, to the board to say. This is how the workings are. So if we respond to something in Sangaville. Uh, to a taxpayer, uh, and a local resident, this is, you know. How we respond to it with the number of pieces of equipment, uh, firefighters or responders and how long. It, a responder is required or needed or how many we are per hour. Um, so that we're, you know. Fiscally managing the workforce going forward, you know, we don't, do we need ten and, you know, who do we keep? Uh, and how long do we keep them? Do we keep, you know, we want the most trained, experienced and proficient individuals on site. For, you know, whatever dictates what that incident might be. So. Uh, Matt and I have sat down and we've kinda put these together cause we just wanted to table it um. To go forward to, to make the department more efficient uh, and, and better going forward. Uh, the second one is also an SOP for mutual aid. Um, well, let's go, i- if we go into some of the. So what, what we have is the original, what the breakdown of responses, right? Um, that Matt provided, or, or somebody did, the last chief I guess did. Um. So I think what Matt and I wanna do is break down, you know, an instance of some of these fires or some of these calls. And how many responders do we need for a local response? Uh, and when, when is it time for, you know, his assistant chief to say, okay, we don't need three of you, three of you. You know, your priority is your, your private employer, so you can go. Right, Matt?
Yeah, it's basically just kinda getting something on paper so that everybody's aware that say we get toned out for. A minor, minor accident or something and we have ten people show up and we only need five. Instead of paying for all ten for the entirety of that incident, because obviously some of. The, the, the department has to stay there for a certain amount of time until the danger is no longer an issue. But we don't necessarily need everybody. So if everybody kinda knows through an SOP that when it becomes available. People that maybe are more proven at their workforce or maybe less trained or something, maybe. Let go earlier than another person. Um, if I only need five and you five work somewhere that really could use you back. I'm gonna say, okay, it's time that we can cut a few people loose, get back to work and you know, others that may have a job that. Doesn't really require them to be there every second. They can probably be the ones to, to fulfill the rest of the incident. That way they know ahead of time, you know, this is probably something that may be asked of you. Um, just to try to keep everything decent. I, you know, we don't always need five people standing around doing nothing. Um, but until we know what the incident needs. I can't just say, well, I only want three people to come because then if it gets to a bad situation, I might need eight or ten and, you know. So you just never know, but if we write this up this way, we can, we can go ahead and say, hey, okay, you signed the SOP. You understand that at this certain point. We may not need everybody.
Matt, sorry, question. Right now, when everyone, when you get toned out for something, everybody shows up, everybody stays?
As of right now, typically if we get toned out for a car fire, whoever's available, they come down. They take their spot doing whatever's requested of them and. More or less over the years, it's just been until the end of the incident, everybody's here because sometimes, yes, it does justify that with getting equipment back and service so long, so forth. But I think we need a way to justify not having as many people all the time. Um, but also still have them walk to respond when it comes time. That's my biggest thing is.
Yeah.
I don't wanna just make something saying for. A fall, I only need two people and then get stuck. Number one, not having enough people and number two, most of these guys are. Other than the, the minimum wage they get paid on call time, they are volunteers. So. I think it's, it would be super frustrating for them to be asked to just not come if we don't need enough people or turn them around as soon as they get here. Cause eventually they're just gonna get tired of it. They're not gonna come at all.
Is, currently.
Yep.
Uh, when an officer arrives, do you, or the next, can you guys get on the radio and say, whoa, whoa, I don't, we're good. I don't need.
And a lot of times we will.
Okay, so you can do that.
If I get out there and say, oh, I only need one truck, I got plenty of guys, I'm gonna get on the radio and say, yes, stand by at the station or I'm all set.
Yep.
Um, whether or not they take off from here or they just stand by, isn't always a hundred percent known until we get back. Um, but if we have something on paper, then I can say, okay, from this point forward, this is kinda what we're doing. Um, and then the other, well, it's a completely different, you know, department, but the building.
We'll, we'll get, I'll, I'll walk the dog on that, but so the reason we brought this up very first thing is because. Matt and I feel that there needs to be an SOP that not only does the board deserve, but the town deserves uh, to be fiduciary with the money that, you know, they pay in taxes. So he and I talked extensively the last week about, you know, how does this look? What do we do? So we're, we're. Communicating about going forward with this and we'd like to have something on paper, he and I to present very soon as an SOP so that, you know. Everybody's comfortable with.
And that helps him. I mean, you go back to this team and say, okay, this is how we're gonna do it. It's in writing. Everybody knows and.
Well, we have SOPs for everything else, so you know, it just makes sense. And I'm not, I'm not trying to. You know, say I only need five people for this, but it, it makes sense in order to be able to spend some of that labor money somewhere else. Or not have employers come down eventually and say, my fire guys are just taking too much time. You know, it's beginning to be a problem. I'm lucky you work at the sewer district. It is what it is. When you go in, come back, you do your thing with it.
Sure.
Um, but not everybody's employers like that and a small company can't afford to do that.
But it works for you with the sewer, even at the sewer district, it works for you because they know you're not abusing it.
Exactly.
Right.
And the first time, even your employer.
Right.
When they start to think, ooh.
Exactly.
Why isn't he back?
And that's all.
And even, you know what, and that's really.
Is just justify everything like, do I need? John more than Robinson's does right now.
Correct. Yep. Do you guys have some?
What's that?
Do you guys have firefighters?
I got any left in Guilford.
No.
Yeah, we don't have any from Sangaville, but Guilford, I don't know.
I'm not sure if I got anybody. I think they all retired out.
You know, it's just, there's always variations to it because some, one day I might have ten people show up, the next day. Even though it might be the same time, same week, you know, during weekday, I might only have three because they fly out there. But I think if we have something so that they're not surprised when we say, hey, it's time to go back to work, we're good here.
Yep.
Um, I think it would be beneficial for, for their employers, for the town, um, kinda a little bit of everything there.
So then also that adds to, you know, the, the ability to, the, the SOP we wanna write in. Because of the financial responsibilities, the life cycle of equipment and how we manage life cycle, new equipment, new equipment, training. And the dollars that we attribute to that and how do, you know, if we're being. Conscient and conservative with the funds, how do we, how does that trickle into, you know. Going forward for the equipment, which will, will roll into the next, uh, the last paragraph after that. So the mutual aid SOP. Um, I just went into state legislature and pulled up, you know, mutual aid uh, arrangements. Um, and I just pulled it up so that we just have clear, you know. I, I'm, I'm extremely, you know, what does the document say? Um, so there is this, it, it is in, you know, state level. Uh, that each local emergency management, you know, so on. That's just for us to be able to sit as a group and collectively dissect and see. Where we fit into this and how we fit into this and how do we write a mutual aid SOP? That doesn't have to be necessarily an agreement with the others because it's already in place, but it's how Matt operates. It's how Matt operates his force and it kinda is in line with the responsive incidents SOP. And then if we go in.
I think if you read your, this is where we've talked about this because none of us have, and I talked to other selectmen, have never been a part of a mutual aid agreement.
And I actually tried, we had a, a, a county meeting, which is the county chiefs, um, last month. And at that point, there's supposed to be a draft given to everybody to bring back to towns and they didn't have it prepared. So. I'm hoping by the next meeting, so I can bring that back to you guys so you can obviously see it of where anything is signed, but ultimately it's a. Countywide gentleman's handshake saying, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours.
But, but you're also, but by signing that agreement, you're committing.
Right.
So many trucks and so many manpower.
It was written that way and it's been, it's been doctored down now because, you know, the, the abilities of towns are changed now. It used to be like you're committing a minimum of four SCBA personnel, you're committing. One truck minimum and so, you know, this and that. And now it's really just kinda coming down to reading as when, you know, called for mutual aid. You're going to show up and assist in the way that you can.
So I think, I think for my brain, it's in, it's doctrine. It's already in writing. It's already at the state legislation level. So how do we implement what they've directed at the state level as us to go forward with arrangements?
Well, I think they are saying that you can have an agreement.
I think they're saying.
They're not saying what the agreement is gonna be.
Yeah, because these, these agreements are fluid.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's what, that's what I'm, that's where I'm going.
Right.
I know what you're trying to do, but what I'm saying is he already has the SOP because this agreement with these communities. That's the way that was already written is by your SOP is if I call you, you're gonna have this truck and these people and.
But it's not, it, it's, it's, it's reciprocal and it's not in, written in ink. Somebody did not sign something that is reciprocal with Sangaville to say.
Hmm, I wouldn't say that.
You think they're in writing?
Oh, yeah. They're in writing.
And as soon as I get a copy, you guys can be able to, obviously I'll bring that to you. It's not gonna be signed without your guys.
That's what I'm saying.
Going back, these, these agreements have existed.
Going back, these agreements have existed for.
But where are they? Where's?
Right, we've never seen them.
So they don't exist.
And they exist, yes, they have them, the fire.
Wait, 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 wait. No, because nobody has put eyes on them to see a wet signature saying that they are.
Fire chiefs in the past have seen these agreements.
But they are responding to these agreements. We're sending assets in as a result of these agreements.
Correct. And I, I think what.
Patrick's mind is, nobody at this table has seen one.
I understand.
So it shouldn't be happening, shouldn't it?
Well, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. If the fire chief has his budget, the fire chief has agreed to this. Because he has a budget that he can spend to go do this.
But nobody here has ever agreed.
I'm not saying I agree with it or I like it, but this is how this has worked.
And we're learning these things are fluid.
Correct.
A community might say, you know what, we're up now.
And really, I don't, my own, and not, no disrespect towards you by any means, I don't even agree myself. That this agreement should be discussed at the fire chief level. This should be discussed at the town manager level. And then it should be brought to the board.
For your town manager, these agreements don't exist because there is no wet signature in his face.
I agree, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's what we feel, that's what exactly.
And you echo, you echo the frustration, I guess. That's my word, not yours.
So I'm, I'm, I'm representing because.
Sure.
These are the things he and I have talked about saying, these are the things we need to protect our agency.
Hundred percent, but that's what I'm saying though. It can't be done and shouldn't be done at the chief level.
No.
It should be done because I'm, we're understanding there's a monthly town managers meeting. Of all the town managers in the area and that to me is the spot of where it should start.
And this, this ball of twine is much bigger than just this mutual aid.
I think it should, obviously it shouldn't have, you know, it should be talked to, or about, about with the chiefs because obviously that affects them, but. Ultimately, yes, I agree that it is, it's above the fire department really as far as funds. The state mutual aid agreement basically writes that you will offer help when, when asked for. Um, and then I think what happened, I wasn't around at the time, obviously, and all that, but. I think what happened is they started this and wrote this agreement to try to protect everybody because most of it is what's. What's in there is kinda saying, when you come to my town and offer me mutual aid, if you break a truck, I'm not responsible.
So the town managers in my eyes need to update this yearly.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, so what I'm saying is by doing that, I'm protecting you of financial liabilities to say, we updated this.
Well, when it comes to budget time and he takes this paper that says three quarters of my call volume is due to mutual aid.
Right.
It's because of the agreement that we agreed upon, which helps him justify his budget.
Right, right.
And you might come to us next year and say, you know what, Guilford just uh, promised uh, fire protection to three more townships. So now our footprint just got bigger. They're getting compensated for it, but we aren't.
Right.
So I should anticipate it's gonna increase our budget by X. Do you guys wanna do that or not? I mean, that's, ultimately, that's what, what is, we, this has grown and grown and grown.
Right. I really think that I talked with Patrick as well about it, but I've sat down and did numbers just because I wanna know and obviously I have to know, but. When somebody, you guys are all aware of the charges that, they, they basically have a breakdown of an engine for this. Uh, you know, this size engine is billable at this hourly rate. So all that basically boils down to is. A town that kinda pulls out of like a mutual aid agreement is subject to charges if they call on somebody else.
I respect Dover's ordinance and I say we're still subject to it.
So which is the next?
Legally, maybe, um, it's not their intention as far as on.
I don't, personally, I don't care about intention. I love them.
And so with that being said. The labor that we've spent out the last three years on providing mutual aid to all of our surrounding communities. The worst year, I think it was twenty twenty-one.
It was, yeah, it was.
Um, at two thousand seven hundred dollars.
So let me, let me walk the, let me walk the dogs on this one. Cause I think, you know, we, I, Matt and I just want. To be transparent and communicate that here's our intentions, you know, and we wanna do this. Uh, and, and do it right. And then, you know, I, I understand there's. Agreement somewhere in some cloud somewhere, right? Uh, you know, and Matt wants that agreement because then it helps him protect himself. So then when we go to the next one. If we don't do, and as he was saying, here's the charges and costs to us for, for our response, you know, and here's what it looks like. So this is just numbers to show what if we weren't in a part of an agreement and what it would charge us if they came to help us, right? So it, it, you know, looks like Dover's nine two two truck is four hundred dollars an hour, right?
Yeah, that's an engine.
Oh, okay, that's what that represents. Oh, okay, okay.
And that's just conversation piece. That gives us the baseline, right? So then when we go to the next level. What Matt did for us was break out uh, the mutual aids that, for the last three years and what it cost us.
Uh-oh, I don't know if that played. Or maybe it's the next one. Nope.
Yeah, shortage of that.
I did that.
Oh.
I screwed it here.
Okay.
Cause I have to. So, um. And then you can see the, the, the twenty twenty-one that Matt's talking about is forty-eight hundred dollars, you know. So this is what was spent last year in mutual aid.
Okay.
Now.
In labor.
Yes.
Yes.
Labor.
Labor. So. Labor. So. Matt and I have kind of, he came to me yesterday and we kinda came up with a concept that we want a table. On how do we recoup some of the money to responses? So next is yesterday's accident up by Bean Hill, right?
Oh, so we hurry, but this is.
This is, so this is the out of state, doesn't pay main taxes, not a ma- main corporation. Got in an accident, Sangerville had to respond to it and it costs. Labor hours, not only that depreciation of equipment because it does, you know, when you, every time you take a truck out, it depreciates. The value of that or depreciates the life cycle. So what, the last SOP that we would like to write would spell out response billing, right? Not to a taxpayer of Sangerville, not to a taxpayer of.
That's the thing that I wanted to make a hundred percent aware of.
It's not a local taxpayer.
Your, your sister, not even somebody in Dover, not somebody in Sangerville, not somebody in.
Within the mutual aid.
Within the mutual, right, right.
I'm talking like this company that's registered out of Massachusetts, huge corporation. Um, commercial vehicle with a value of over whatever we set it at, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. Whatever you set it at. It gives us the ability to try to recoup some costs of our response.
So you're talking non-state residents.
Basically.
Yes.
Unless it's a Portland-based company that's huge and then.
Well, three quarters of the, think about it, three quarters of the trailers that are on the road in the United States. Of all the tractor trailers in the United States, three quarters of them are registered in Maine.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
It's actually, it's probably closer to eighty two.
Yeah.
Because Maine has a steel of a deal.
Yeah.
On registering vehicles.
So they're.
So the trailer is registered in the state of Maine.
Yeah.
But their DOT certificate on their truck is non.
Oh.
So, uh, so the, the motor home from Florida goes off the road, they're gonna get a bill?
No, not necessarily, we can set this up however we want.
Oh, I just, I tried to get a feel of what we're.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent not my intentions, it's like if, uh, HO Hushard fuel truck. Comes up here and creates a huge disaster for us, we have the ability to recoup costs. If this ass, liquid asphalt truck from Massachusetts is passing through. They were probably on their cell phone or whatever happened, they drifted off the road and now we've got. Nine people for five hours, which probably will change because we're probably gonna have to get back out there again and this tank is removed. Perhaps in situations, um, obviously like Patrick had said, truck wearing a tear, fuel. And all this stuff that just right now, if we don't have anything.
But this particular situation, why isn't the DEP involved in it?
They are involved.
So, I mean, they should be the ones that are out there making sure.
And they, they've had a representative there yesterday and today, but.
Yeah, this goes from fire department to code enforcement.
Yeah, this really isn't, you know what I mean?
But ultimately.
So there's four hours of response that we had flashing lights on from Sangerville.
Yeah.
To an out of state entity that does not pay taxes here.
Just to get the truck.
Personally, I'm gonna just throw this out there for you, I am not in favor with any of this. Um, I look at my insurance bill every month and I absolutely hate it. And this is the reason why we all pay what we pay and it's what we pay for everything else is you are just driving up more costs everywhere else.
The bill and insurance company?
Your insurance company.
It's not gonna affect your personal unless you get caught for DUI.
Because all of these, I understand we're doing at a higher level, but I just don't agree with it personally.
Because of the trickle down, the, the overall trickle down.
But this is.
Back two minutes ago, we have a volunteer fire department, now we have a fire department that wants to start building.
But we're not the only ones in the state that do it.
If it happened two miles back, Dexter's gonna build them, if it happened ten miles forward, Dover's gonna build, you know. It, no matter what, it, it's going to happen.
But what it does is recoup some of that money we spent before.
And when it comes down to the budget, having, you know, I'm gonna go back to it, there's more labor time, there's gonna be more on the payroll end of it. There's gonna be more on the equipment end of it and then when we have increases there and we haven't explored ways to offset it.
And this is one way to offset it.
It's just one way.
It's, it's a way to offset.
There's only so many ways to offset it, um, and this is the biggest one that we.
See, I, I look at all this revenue and it should be, it should be accounted for within the whole mutual aid agreement. Uh, you know, if, if Route fifteen is generating and Route seven is generating all of this revenue for Dexter and Dover. And we've agreed to mutual aid with those companies or those cities, those towns. That revenue, we deserve a portion of that. Uh, if Guilford is, is, you know, making money because of all that traffic going to Greenville, then. Yeah, I mean, it, it seems to me like this all needs to be tied together as opposed to each little village trying to figure out how they're gonna get their fifty dollars.
Right, and that's a big.
Cause we're responding to all of these costs.
Right, but this is, I, so.
So maybe this is a cog in that big machine.
Big machine, but.
But this, but this cog that we're talking about is twenty percent of our budget of our department. Our in-town cost, our response is twenty percent. So we're, we're trying to generate an income of the small piece instead of worrying about really where we're spending all the money.
No, 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 that's not, that's, that, this is separate than, than that.
No, this is, but.
This is, but that's what I'm saying.
That's why Matt and I are saying.
Yeah.
Number one is an SOP on how do we become better stewards of the money, right?
And so if we threw ours portion of this into the bucket and everybody else is gonna throw theirs into the bucket, now you're getting to a real solution.
Correct.
I think honestly, as far as the mutual aid, like what you're saying with. Guilford is getting from apartment and Abbott Kingsbury and we're assisting them and not getting anything back. I agree with that, I, I do, but unfortunately that is really between. Like you said, it's above my head.
You're totally right.
Hundred percent.
You're totally correct. So is this.
So is this.
This is the same, it's all about chasing dollars.
But nobody, nobody from anywhere else showed up yesterday, right? It was all us.
Yeah, there was no mutual aid, nobody showed up.
No, but.
So why are we not billing?
Did they get toned down? Did mutual aid get toned down?
Sangerville didn't tone.
We didn't tone because it was something that we could handle ourselves.
Okay, alright.
We only tone if we need help, so.
So why are you not, why are we not catching that?
No, I'm, I'm agreeing that, that this cog needs to be a machine, I'm just saying this is. This is the only beginning of a much more needed discussion.
Smoke that we need to worry about.
We can throw our change in that.
It's a big number, that's literally all of men, almost three quarters of mutual aid last year in Maybauer.
Yeah.
You can get it all back in two accidents.
Yeah, and I'm worried about the liability side when you start.
Yeah, that, we do have to know that.
As a professional firefighter and not as the volunteer firefighter. And you go out there and you mess something up.
The training that these guys go through is the exact same as Van Gogh firefighters or Portland.
So that part doesn't matter.
The state Maine doesn't take her, so that's.
But that's what I'm trying to say, you've been saying your guys have gone through the training level. When you start billing as a professional fire department instead of a small town volunteer fire department and one of your guys screws up. And we're billing for it, that could have bigger ramifications.
Well, we don't know that, but that's a nice question to answer.
My billing doesn't indemnify you.
I mean, you're, you're literally charging for a truck to be there for four hours.
Right.
Cause it went out of those doors. So, so here's the all offset, right? So in my mind, we, we, we discussed how much they spend at the fire department, how much mutual aid we spend and all of this, right? And then Matt and I come with a solution to try to generate some revenue, but we don't wanna do that.
No, I'm, 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 we're open to the discussion, but it's, it's twenty percent of the cost.
Right, but I need to know where I'm driving the train, is the thing.
I just think there's a lot bigger things that we need to worry about in the fire department than billing because of one incident.
So then if we go into the next. In state statute legislature, anybody that causes an accident and is found at fault for DUI or OUI. Can be charged up to twenty five hundred dollars for the, from the local response.
And are they all doing this?
I, I don't care what anybody else is doing, I care about.
About any of this DUI, this is first I've heard of that.
Okay.
I do know that everybody around us is doing for the commercial. I know Dover is, I know Dexter is, Dexter I believe is the first one in the area. Guilford was, I'm not sure if they still are, I haven't, you know, reached out and asked, um, but. You know, most everybody is.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's obviously not a lucrative thing, it's not like you're making a business out of it, it's just trying to recoup some costs.
And in my eyes, nobody in this town pays taxes. To respond to somebody that is under the influence that causes an accident, that's not what they signed up for. They signed up to have an entity to respond to events that are, you know, caused by somebody. That just happened, it wasn't a, somebody that came home from the pub and decided to. Get in an accident, you know, I, I, I don't, I think that it should be tagged at some level and this should be in an SOP that if somebody is. Intoxicated, then.
You're right, but do you have to demonstrate an actual expense? I see there's a limit, but, or, or do you just say, hey, we showed up, it's twenty five hundred bucks?
Well, how do you know Sheriff's Department is already not nailing it?
Well, I'm, there may be a lot of entities nailing this.
Yeah.
But that's what I mean, it's twenty five hundred bucks, you can split it four ways.
Well, I don't know.
That's why I need more.
The sheriff's department might be able to do this and the fire department might be able to do it.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think you'll find that what they're asking for is a copy of a run sheet showing how many people were there, for how long and what trucks and. But I have no idea about the DUI, OUI part of it, that's.
But unless it's an accident, you guys aren't called to the traditional DUI.
No, right, right, right.
Not until they. Kissed trees because they were drunk.
Right.
And we had one at the end of Silver's Mills over the winter, was drunk, went off, took out the stop sign, into coat, you know, off through the trees. Um, that was a DUI, they were arrested.
And you had to respond and.
We had to respond, we spent hours out there for waiting for a wrecker, people, trucks.
Sure.
Um, and it's, you know, like, like I said, I'm just not trying to. Pin any money on Grandma Betty for going off the road, but if somebody's leaving the Bears Den and going to Dexter and they plow through the trees. And we spend five hours out there waiting for a wrecker or cleaning up or extrication or whatever. It's just recouping some of the costs that we're spending that you guys and. My parents and Warren aren't spending their tax dollars to clean up somebody's DUI. In reality, because that's what it is, is.
An accident's one thing, but oh.
Right.
And the, and these other towns are doing this already, or do you know that?
Uh, the DUI, I do not.
Okay.
Well, don't, yeah, don't pull me on that, I know the commercial vehicle part of it.
Yep, okay.
That's it. Um, I just spoke with Patrick about the DUI, OUI thing, I've never heard of it before now.
Neither.
Um, I think it falls under the same lines as the commercial, it's just, it's a recoup of costs that is. You're at an incident caused by somebody other than a taxpayer in your district. It kinda opens up your tax dollars to assist. Somebody that lives in town or in the mutual aid area for a structure fire from a lightning strike. Faulty electrical issue, uh, you know, wood stove chimney fire turns into a structure fire, those are legitimate tax, that's what people pay their taxes.
That's what we get paid to do.
So that when they pay their taxes, they know that they have fire coverage for that to protect their life, their property. You know, all of that, um, they're not looking at it as. Somebody went off the road, so they made a bad decision and now, you know, I'm paying this out right now because of it.
Honestly, for what we've already learned about what this means when you print this paper off, until you dig into it and find the truth. Of what's behind it and what it entails, that's when you know.
Which one is that?
About this DUI, any of them, because it's no different, I mean, how many times have we talked about? Turnout gear that's only good for so long, because here's the state paper that says so. There's always other papers that say more.
But this gives the ability to, to stop the process to say that it is a legitimate legislature, that we can start. Doing the research and understanding that, you know, there might be some revenue involved in some of this stuff.
The biggest reason that we're exploring this is for, another thing that Patrick talked about is. The end of life on equipment, you know, the gear we, we got, we found in a loophole where. NFPA says ten years, departmental labor, as long as it's serviceable, they're letting it go. Great, you know, we're gonna be able to get by on that for a little bit longer. Air packs. That's a whole different story. Um, I just had six air bottles that had to take out of service because. We haven't been able to replace them, they lost their fifteen year life, um, their nine hundred bucks apiece. The air packs themselves, not the bottle, but the pack, the frame, the plumbing. Uh, they were here today to flow test them, which has to be done. Um, and they said, these, this model, you got two years left. And they are, they've already discontinued, um, production of parts. So if they start to break, there will be no fixing. Um, they're about seventy thousand dollars a ton and we have eleven, um, so.
This is the bad part of federal grants.
The, it isn't necessarily the bad part, the federal grants are great, what you have to do is plan afterwards. You have to plan for the next fifteen years.
Right.
To either set money aside for when they all come due, or you start buying two packs a year, two bottles a year, two sets of gear a year. Have to plan it and that wasn't done, so now you have. Eleven air packs that are all gonna follow at the same time, we have six bottles we got last year, but six more that are due. Um, and trucks that, you know, eventually, they're gonna, eventually, everything, you buy a car, you're not gonna keep it forever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we just look at this as one way to try to offset a little bit of that. Because eventually it's gonna come down to, it's gonna come from somewhere.
And Matt, how many OUIs would you say that you respond to?
Roughly in Sangerville, half dozen a year, roughly, accidents caused by.
And it doesn't necessarily mean that we can collect this money, I mean, cause you're billing, it looks as though you're billing the individual.
Right, it gives us.
I think it's more of a restitution.
Process on writing an SOP to say, and how and who gets billed.
Right.
From my experience talking with other department chiefs, the commercial vehicle part of it. Is basically, you write out a bill, send it to their insurance company, insurance companies ninety percent of the time just cut you a check.
So after, after the OUI one, it's kind of some standard policies from other towns in the state that, you know. Uh, the, the, the Casco Bay one, or Casco was, you know, maybe isn't as relevant, it's just a policy that. You know, it does talk about emergency medical, um, but it does talk first responder. The next one's gonna be the Howland Fire Department, which billing service policy. Which kinda helps us and gives us, you know, a little bit of guidance on how to go forward with ours, um. So doesn't the Chelsea one, um. And I, I put those in there for, for, you know, just us to have examples and to chew on and to discuss and, and go forward. And then there's a couple others that I got, uh, brought up, uh, the first couple pages of the fire rescue, uh, page. Isn't so in-depth, but then it does get into billing and local billing and stuff, um, I won't go, I won't beat the dead horse on it, but. It just gives us a baseline of how we can, uh, standardize this and, and go forward to recoup. You know, some monies.
I'll be interested to read these, um, you know, take home any.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Um, and.
I think a huge thing for everything here, if we choose to not go forward with anything trying to recoup money this way. Is to find another way to get everything on a schedule so we don't get hit with a huge bill, like right now, if we were to replace those six bottles all at once, that's. It's almost seven thousand dollars, that's a, that's a big chunk of money.
Yeah, as long, I can tell you, as long as, and it's before I sat here, when I was at the budget committee. All of these years and every time we met with the chief, it is, please, especially during the budget process. Do we have an inventory of everything we have and what is the life expectancy and what's your plan? And not a single person has ever provided any.
I can guarantee you that I'll have everything ready for you because. That's, that's my biggest, I just don't want us to get called with our pants down and we're getting close, like very close.
And that'll be the next tab, obviously, that, you know, discussion from, from my, my point of view and the town manager report. It would be the next tab in the binder and in conversation pieces, a program of events, um. I don't know, I, I just wanted to make sure that I was supporting my chief and that we were supporting some sort of. You know, what is best interest financially to, to the community and the board? And, you know, do, do Matt and I further going into this investigation and analytics and analysis of this process? On how this might work and help generate and replace some of costs.
I, I, I think it's a valid.
Yeah, I think the exercise is worthwhile. Yeah, I think the exercise is worthwhile. I, I, I'd, I'd still question, you know, long-term whether we can be in the firefighting business. I mean, I, I don't see us that different than Parkman and Abbott.
Right, I mean Guilford's in the business. Dover's in the business.
Yeah, I mean, a million here is seventy-five grand. Can we buy a million dollar fire truck? I don't think we can.
No, but we wouldn't be necessarily in the place that Matt's in right now replacing some of the smaller items.
But when you look at, let's say our budget gets to a hundred grand a year, which you could easily. And, and say sixty-five to seventy percent of that is a mutual aid, so roughly sixty, seventy thousand dollars of that, would Guilford take it for sixty? It probably would.
We're not anywhere near that for mutual aid right now. We're five thousand dollars, I mean.
Well, fifty percent of our calls.
Yeah, I mean, it's seventy-five percent.
I understand what you're saying as far as calls.
So it's your existence. If your existence is a hundred grand a year, and half of it's.
I'm talking just dollar amount because if you look at like, like what we put down on paper, if you have five thousand spent out in labor costs, if Sangerville roughly historically sees anywhere from three to six structure fires in town a year, historically. That obviously could change. Last year was a good year for us. We only had two of them, which didn't even turn out to be bad. Great. But no department in the area can do it alone. Dover is huge for our area. They call eight departments for help. Um, and if we have come to a point where we are not providing mutual aid and then we start getting charged for the help that we have to give.
That's, I don't think that's what we're talking about.
Well, I know. I'm just, I'm just telling you that I've, just so that you know, I punched up those numbers and per call you're talking about fifteen thousand per structure fire. An average of five a year in the eighty, seventy-five.
No, we, I totally believe that, but, and so what Abbott did is Abbott said, well, you know what? We're not gonna pay fifteen thousand per call. We'll negotiate a rate with Guilford annually.
Completely understand that as well. And I think, I don't know if you guys have reached out to them again, but everything, I, I have, obviously people talk. I know the Dover Fire Chief has talked to his town manager. Um, the Dexter Chief basically said ain't gonna happen. Um, it's cross county line.
Think about that. The Dexter Chief says unilaterally, without going to his, his council or to his town manager, not happening.
But they're all, they're all talking.
Not gonna cross county line, but when Dexter has a fire, who's the first one to mutual aid to?
Well, they, they come assist us with mutual aid.
No, I'm just saying.
And we assist them.
Right, but the pay, pay to play can't, can't cross county lines.
They use a different.
Phone a friend can.
They use a different radio system. Um, obviously they talk to Penobscot Dispatch. It just gets confusing for everybody. So that's kind of where their aspect was. Everybody else that I talked to was saying a hundred grand plus.
But again, you're talking at the chief.
Exactly. That's why I'm, I'm imploring that if we want to, if you guys want to say this is just costing too much, then I mean, I guess you gotta go to the, the slide board of that town and get a real number.
Absolutely, that's exactly how it would work.
As of right now, there hasn't been a real number and I know.
Well, there was a few years ago.
Right. And then the cost of a pumper went from two hundred fifty thousand to eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, but I, I mean, Abbott's still paying the same amount.
That's changed a lot.
Yeah, no, what will, what will drive the conversation is the number. When the number is a hundred thousand annually and then, you know, every five years an additional two hundred thousand because the trucks are more expensive, the bottles and all of that. It, it ultimately, it will drive the decision and I don't know what the number's gonna be. I don't know how long it's gonna take.
Your biggest factor right now for that number isn't going to be the cost of coverage. It's going to be the cost of losing twenty mutual aid people and two engines and another tank.
No, they won't all go away either. You know, when, I'm sure when Abbott and Parkman and Kingsbury send money into Guilford, Guilford uses that to expand their fire department, their equipment, because they're covering more towns or they have that revenue that they're guaranteed to get. I mean, it's just like running a company. Um, and, and I don't know when it'll ever happen, but I, I just don't. These, these things could help, that's no question, but it's almost a drop in a bucket.
I think at this point, either we've got to either get that number and figure out one way or the other, because otherwise then we need to, if, if having somebody else cover the number is way wacky, then, which I'm ninety percent sure it will be, but then we need to say, okay, that ain't gonna work. What do we gotta do to keep everything going?
Exactly right.
Correct. But the other side, and that's, but in my brain as well, okay, because I don't want this fire department to go away. I want this to work just as much as you.
And nobody does.
But the reality in my brain is you have Guilford, who's in the fire department business. You have Dover that's in the fire department business. You have Dexter that's in the business and these are all bigger towns with more money that can fund all of these fire departments. And when you look at the call volume in Sangerville, for what we have for in-town requirements and what we have for out-of-town requirements, do we really need a fire department with thirty guys? Do we really need a fire department with two bumpers, a tanker and a rescue truck? That's what I, do we need eleven air packs? You know, do we look at?
Only if we're providing mutual aid for all those big firefighting towns.
So do you, do you relook at the department as what do we need to create a really nice, smaller department to have first response for the citizens of Sangerville and have trucks water available on scene until the bigger departments can get there to help? And we still have a pumper that's available to help a mutual aid in other towns.
That's basically, I mean, other than providing mutual aid when requested, so that they'll provide it to us, that's where we're at now.
But how many trucks do we have?
We have four trucks, but you need your frontline pumper, hundred percent all the time. Obviously the first one on every call. You have a two-man cab. How do you get anybody there without another truck? There's your rescue. You have a tanker that moves water. How else are you gonna get a fire out? And then the other one is here as a draft truck, but it's basically just here because we've had it for a hundred years and it's not costing.
But that's what I'm saying, everything you just said, I agree with that, but that's the thought process of how you operate a full-size department. So, so can you think about it differently and how do we?
So, so I think, Matt, what you and I need to do, if I'm hearing everything right, is go to the drawing board and see what a restructure of the fire department looks like as far as equipment. You know, do we peel off and sell a couple trucks for something that's relevant?
That's kind of one thing that I have visited in my head as well, is a consolidation of equipment. The only problem is you gotta spend money to consolidate, you know, in a sense. So you could get rid of a tanker truck if you've got a pumper, tanker combination, but that's not cheap. You could get rid of your secondary pumper and a rescue and get a one-ton rescue, but that's not free.
Well, I, I, so I. I think a lot of what you're saying goes back to the higher level to the mutual aid agreement.
Right. And what you're saying is, you know, you and I, let's sit down, life cycle, so then we'll go to, so we can go to the next tab, because that is part of this whole discussion is program of life cycle of events, not just the fire department, the roads, you know, winter sands, uh, contracts, lawn, you know, this cemetery, so that'll be part of that, but so Matt and I, i- is it, is it prudent for he and I to, to the SOPs and dive into, start writing those, to present those, to say, well, this is the way we'd like to go forward? And do the homework on billing out and, you know, I know we're not gonna make a ton of money, but it will cover some of the other things that we get called out to do for now. I'm not saying that I won't go to the table on the first week of every Friday and have a lunch with the other town managers and say, well, we need an agreement here.
Yeah, I agree. You're, you're correct. We do.
And I think, I think what would really help is just that. If you went to these towns and said, happy to help, need your help back. But Abbott, Kingsbury, Atkinson, these other places that you're getting paid for coverage for, if we're gonna help, we need some help back.
Yeah, I mean, there's a bucket of money.
So, I think the only way to solve what we have in front of us is to take the increment of the small of what we can manage now and to help us. Matt and I come up with how we, the SOP for what is, you know, response. Mutual aid agreements and then how we do this billing of outside entity, not internal to Sangerville or local, you know, a granny coming from Bahaber in her little Volvo to go to Greenville. You know, we, 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 somehow we do that, but we also owe, how do we revamp the fire department to get, you know, maybe we do have to spend a, a heavy amount, but it gives us the longevity because it doesn't cost us the sixty thousand dollars that it's costing us right now, or, you know, or, or. So I think we owe that. Is that, is that, is that a good, you know, forward?
Look, yeah, looking for a.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it is. It's a strategy for the future. You know, the SOP might be task and organization of, of your, your personnel.
And the, and the openness of these other communities to have this conversation is gonna play a huge role in what our trajectory is. If they're open, they, yeah, you're right. I mean, we're the bottom, bottom rung in the ladder, so we get that. Uh, so it's up to us to say, hey, we got, we gotta change the way we're doing this. If they're open to that change, who knows?
I don't think we've asked that, that question to the other towns.
Well, that's where we need to start because until we know what direction going in, obviously this other stuff is subject to change.
And I guess that's kind of what we were getting, I, I like this idea and that idea, but there's a bigger picture here that's really driving us.
Yeah, absolutely. So I need to chip away at that, but if we can chip away at four thousand dollars because we're billing somebody from Massachusetts for a four-hour response.
Sounds really smart to me.
Then we're recouping, that money goes back into the fire department for life cycle of equipment.
It goes back to general fund.
That's true.
Right, but then it can be.
There's an accounting of it. You know what came in and all.
Any, any funds that comes into the town goes to general fund.
I got you. Yeah, I'm tracking. Yeah, okay.
Doesn't mean you can't keep a spreadsheet at the end of the day. He kept track of this.
Look what we saved that we wouldn't have had.
Right. And then at, on the town warrant, that's when you could put.
But it's a very strong argument.
Okay, now I have a warm and fuzzy.
That's how.
Sure, I got it. I got educated. Perfect. So then we're gonna work on that. We'll be, we'll be into it and then that'll, that'll transition over to the next thing, which is, uh, oh wait, you already signed the, uh, the letter for, the, the thing for, uh, the.
Catering?
Catering.
Oh, we did?
No, it's here. It's right in here.
Are we off fire department subject?
Yeah, we are. We're good. Thank you for coming.
I have my kids' open house or outside of the state.
No, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you guys for hearing us out. And like I said, I just, I want it to work. I want the fire department to work, but obviously we can do it.
This is exactly how we gotta do it. I appreciate it.
And whatever way it has to be done, it has to be done, but I just, I don't think until we get all the information from all sides, we're not gonna be able to. And if we don't get the information in time, we're gonna end up spending money before we need to.
Yep. Thank you, Matt.
We have a, uh, it's a request for a temporary liquor license for a catering event. Uh, what's the name of this? Oh, Jeff's Catering and Event Center.
Well, it's for the.
Is it for Timber Hitch?
Yes. Timber.
Hitch?
It's a wedding reception at Timber Hitch. Kind of a play on words there. Okay.
Is it today?
I don't know. I see a sign that says parking.
So I make a motion that we, we grant this request.
All right, just a second.
All in favor? We are all in favor.
Then we can go on to the, uh, next. Which walks into how, uh, I would like to operate the program of events or program memory number, or however we wanna name it, whatever we wanna name it. It's, I, I printed off uh, F, uh, the calendar year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four uh, to see kind of my, my thoughts. I didn't dive in fully. I think it's the next tab.
Is, is this what we're looking at?
Yeah.
This.
Yeah. You guys are folded in your. It's broke down by, by the months, obviously, and then broke down by the year. And then what I've done is milestones of when things start. Um, one thing, you know, being winter sand, we're already at the helm where we need it. I talked to Chris today. Uh, we've got some quotes. I bounced some quotes off of other companies in the state on what their price is. Um, I know one, one price was twenty-three and a half dollars a yard for winter sand. Uh, the, the quote that I bounced off of an entity in the state was sixteen dollars a yard delivered. And now I know that this is a viable company because they deliver to Bahaber Southwest, Elsrum.
They delivered here?
Uh, I tried pulling that and I don't know if it's gonna happen.
But still, delivers locally.
That's the problem.
Yeah, that's the problem, but I needed to bounce off and solidify what numbers we're talking, right? So it's also nine dollars out of their pit by contract, so.
Was that down the MBI?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a long way.
It is a long haul and somebody would be doing a lot of favor. Uh, but.
If you could get it cheaper, I'm open. I mean, it's almost like saying I found a place in Connecticut.
But the relevance, I think, is this company is, the, within this re, uh, radius, whatever that radius is, twenty, thirty miles, I mean, it's not.
No, we need to find its equivalent.
Exactly.
But, but, so that's, there you go.
There, yes, so that's what we need to do.
We're out of that range.
Right, we're out of their range. So if that's what they're charging, uh, great, we need to.
So, so.
That's the, that's the biggest problem with sand that we've already learned is the geographics. There ain't a lot of sand left in our area, so our footprint keeps having to, keeps having to go further away. And that's why the sand in our area is costing us good. There ain't a lot of them in, there isn't a lot of it anymore.
Right. So, well, and the reason I called was for educational knowledge to say what is making sense and what isn't making sense. So I say that to say, cause I know you guys are working on what is the best for us and trying to get some, you know, I know Chris is trying to do all the.
Chris talked about old garages.
Yeah.
And that's why he talked to you about this morning, probably.
Yeah, he did a little bit. He said he was gonna talk to him.
I've got allergies here. My left ear is deaf right now. I've been running that road there, but I can only hear, I think I've got my heads in the.
Before we ended up with lost in sand, we ended up talking a possibility of reaching out and going as far as Lake Parity so we could going out further, because we was running out of options before we ended up with their good sand a few years ago.
Parity's getting that stuff out Plymouth from B C gravel.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's why he's getting most of his stuff, which.
No, but it's not MBI.
A lot closer than that.
Well, it's not actually necessarily, it's, so it's, it's Lemoine, it's outside.
Oh, Lemoine, okay.
I mean, you don't have to cross the bridge.
Oh, that's a lot closer.
Well, it is this time of year.
You would have to refill the truck, so.
The biggest thing that we've learned though, it doesn't matter who you're talking to, make sure you get a sample.
Get a sample.
Well, so I know that, I know this stuff. No, the, uh, and this company does all the municipalities down there and they've done it for, since I was a baby.
Okay. So.
Yeah, and maybe this, I don't know, maybe this trucking, I mean, maybe we could hire someone to truck. I don't know.
Hire trucks, I know we can get at least nine dollars.
Yeah, so we got some room.
We just need trucks. There's, I got.
And those won't be cheap, but we, it, the pile needs to be bigger.
Right. And, and I wanted an asthma check on where are we with?
Sure.
What goes on up here to what I know, to what we can do and what we, what we need and, you know, what are the opportunities and possibilities, you know? Uh, as far as hiring trucks go, I don't even know what that looks like, because I already know.
Everybody's advertising for drivers.
And I know I just built my Jeep and diesel's not cheap, so.
Yeah, so.
You're, you're not getting one out of this company. I know that I was flat out told.
And you guys don't have the manpower or the enough vehicles to do that.
Not two thousand.
No, I mean, if you're gonna do that. You need to start in June.
Now, you could.
Talking dump trailers, if you're gonna do that.
Or you call somebody like Each Front Properties that does haul beyond Penox Scott County.
Parity, they got a whole slew of dump trailers.
Right.
Oh.
How many, how many yards of the trailer? So a dump trail is gonna be twenty-four, right?
How many adds to salt?
Side dump trail. Twenty-two to twenty-four, depending what it is.
What do you get when the salt truck comes?
When the salt truck brings it?
Yeah.
Uh, they're bringing. Thirty.
But that's a rear dump, right?
Thirty, yeah, that's a rear dump, that's a side dump.
Yeah, and you don't, don't haul it wet. Cause we can get more yads on when it's dry. But, so, that's part of the next conversation, but this is, this is the programs that I wanna bring in, and this is how I wanna manage the programs. You know, so next year, we're already talking about the plow contract, has already been sent out for, for bid. In November, December timeframe of this year for next year, right, the lawns are already, for the cemeteries are already put out to bid, the road contracts for. You know, these items are already programmed, we're already putting them out to bid, so the next year, when we come into when we need winter sand. You guys aren't running around trying to call for the best price, we've already put the winter sand out for bid.
Yeah. On winter sand, so winter sand, we don't need a bid. All we need to do for winter sand is you just need to call around and get best pricing.
You know.
That's, but we don't have a, that's the difference about municipality, instead of, you don't need to do.
No, there's no bidding.
There's no formal bidding process, it's, you can literally sit and pay off the phone.
It's not like the army.
Correct, well, right, and I get that, now. I, I wonder if we have a competition on.
Bid it for always the best price.
Correct.
No, you don't. It's not the best, it's not the best material either, cause I can go get us nine dollars a yard right now. And we all know that that's not even worth fertilizer.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, that's why it doesn't matter, you just, we always need a sample, because.
I, I know of several pits in the area that send them, sell to many municipalities every year. And it's not what I really wanna see on the roads in Sangerville, because.
But you don't have to waste any time putting ads in the paper, or posting anything online, you can literally go to the pit, like the sample, tell the guy you got a deal.
But it still needs to be.
Right, 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 right.
Once it's budgeted.
That's the.
No, no, but I, you, what you're discussing is you're showing us.
The timeline of when you wanna do.
And this is gonna mature, this is just an example of how I'm gonna operate, cause.
Sure.
Next year at this time, we need to be looking at twenty-six.
Yeah, and that salt sand pile should have been up months ago.
Uh, you know, any of the contracts, any, so then, I walk into, uh, you know, on the, the twenty twenty-three. There's a place for the fire department, you know, that is programmed for life cycle of items and things that Matt needs to put in there to tell me. Hey, we, we need this, but it's transparent, so everybody here sees that this is, here's the things upcoming. Not only does it do by the month, by the year, I got a place for daily inputs and outputs, right? And I say that because how much general assistance is, you know, when is that paid, when is that going in, when is that coming out, how, you know?
Yep.
What does that look like, so when you walk into that office and you say. Well, today is a general assistance day, how much did we pay out, or what did we do, or how, it's, again, it's, it's programmed events. You know, taxes and, and those things are, or, you know, even another program, forty-five day or thirty day notices are already out. October thirteenth, no secret, that's the ribbon cutting day for new owner. Um, so that's how I wanna operate that.
That's great.
Uh, one report we did send out, speaking of ribbon cutting, uh, seventeen foreclosure notices. Uh, and then, the priority task list that, you know, we had discussed.
Can we stop right there for a second?
Absolutely.
So, before you took over, we had a conversation about this, about these foreclosure notices. There was a question. That was proposed to us of where the old town manager started the process, and now we have a new town manager. If all of them, that process would have to be restarted? It's a research question, I just letting you know the conversation.
So as, as certified, Lorna went through the process.
Oh, good, okay.
To the end, so now, after this is, cause they've all been served.
Yep.
This has already been done.
Yep.
Already been certified, right?
Yep.
So now, next.
Now the changes are made.
Will be made.
Okay.
The next cycle, Patrick will pick up.
Okay.
On the certified.
Okay.
But we kept continuity reasons.
Handing the baton.
That's, that's, that, yeah.
That was a number one conversation, Lorna and I had, uh, you know, day two maybe. That, you know, let's, let's keep the baton going, and then we'll transfer it after certification, so, that's how that went.
Okay.
Uh, the next is, uh, what I call a one to end list, priority task list. Here's things that I'd like to prioritize, and I just set an example in here, uh, of how to go, how I wanna go forward. With this, and it, all it does is list the priority that it's in, the department that owns it, the budget line that's attributed to it. And the description, estimated cost, remarks, and then where does it fall within the budget line? You know, if that budget line moves up, then obviously, something on that one to end list falls off. But that's how I wanna operate, what it is you three dictate to me as a priority.
So your A on the list, I'm still.
The calendar of programmed events?
No, right here, on. Cause we've, just FYI for you, we've had a very nice com- or I say it's a very nice company, they've done our cemeteries for many years. With not a single complaint that I know of. Um.
Oh, the upcoming bids?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But last year, they dropped, I think, every contract they had, except ours. Because they are getting ready to retire, and I think it was, if they were gonna do ours last year. So, I'm there, and we usually haven't gotten other bids to put in. So I'm concerned about that, I mean, if they're, my own, if they put a bid in next year, peace of mind.
Right, right.
I'm also not so sure if they're going.
They're going to.
Right.
And, and, so that's, that's, you know, one of the, by, by November. You know, I know typically it's been December twenty-ninth or whatever that these go out, by November. I need to make sure that I'm soliciting for bids, and that needs to be on the program sheet, that these items are coming up, you know?
Well, I know that's been an issue in the past, not so much on the cemetery one, but on other bids that we put out, our bids went out so late. That a lot of the contractors are very committed to. So they, they couldn't put it, they didn't have the option.
Right, so this is one.
So by putting them out.
Yeah, so, and, that might, that milestone might move next year. Might move earlier into the year, but for now, this milestone is November.
Yep.
And then next year will go from there, and now I'll get a feeling from the contractors of, hey, guy. Can we do something before frost? Right?
Right, right, right. Yep.
The, 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 the paragraph Echo, uh, I think, and I don't know, you, you'll educate me, is a recreational committee. Of some sort.
Yeah, Sangerville really isn't in the rec business, we have a entity that's really based in Guilford, isn't Pirate Rec out of Guilford? A really engaged group of parents and coaches, and, and they like our piece of property. Got multiple fields, and, and, uh, they, we basically, we have a very loose agreement with them, they, they pretty much have the run of the place.
They, they do other games, they do other stuff.
And they do a good job, they clean up after themselves, at least.
But beyond, be- beyond, I, and I'm talking beyond sports. You know, is there, you know, a flea market to have, or farmer's market to have? Uh, host something over there?
Well, there's, there's, and actually, we'll get, you're jumping ahead.
There's a concert series, they tried to do that.
Tried to do that once, um, that whole, it's, I got a whole list of things for all the million plates that keep, that drop, but. Well, really, the bigger thing that we found over there is, um, that driveway is not in a very good spot. The road needs to be moved.
Okay.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
It goes right through.
Through the middle of everything.
Right, right.
So you're, you know, you've got all these boaters that are trying to get in and out, and you've got people that are trying to legitimately loo- use the. The waterfront area, um, you have a lot of the traffic, we don't wanna talk about it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But there is a lot of good traffic that goes through there, so you've got all that trying to go through the middle. And then you have Pirate Rec, who's phenomenal at doing what they do, they're trying to do all the sporting stuff along there. And now, not negative about what you're saying, but now, we're, I think, we, the road really needs to be fixed.
We need to get a vote on that one. That's the information that I need to be able to go back to say, how do I do this, how do we schedule this? So that's why, and then it leads into, you know, the other, last paragraph is a think tank, you know, or. Coffee talk with town manager on Wednesdays, because let's face it, it's closed down there, but I'm here. And if we, if I host something like that, that we can talk, and I can bring that up, and how do we do this, and how do we plan events? And how do we schedule events on programmed event calendar, or, or future operations? Um, you know, I, I just would like to try it, I, I get, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I love community thought process, I, I mean, how do you bring people together, whether it's a flea market or a. Food camp, whatever down there, I mean, food covered.
But I need the back history on all of that.
Correct.
From the pirate, you know, the recreational, the sports rec and, and, and leisure part of things.
Yeah.
To the road, to the extracurricular activities, which I've kinda tuned in, cause I drive down there randomly throughout the day.
Yeah, yeah, you have to spend much time there, and it's pretty obvious.
Um, and then also, you know, can, and should I be calling the outdoor recreation director for the state to, to ask for ideas? To ask for, you know, could you come up for, you know, and see what we can do, or see where you can probe this? And help out the waterfront, this is, it's a waterfront.
Oh, yeah.
The best piece of property that we actually own is, is the town owned with no tax revenue.
Yeah.
Right, it is a phenomenal piece of property.
Yeah, but how do we, how do I come up with concepts to generate some sort of revenue from that piece of property?
Yep.
This, I guess what I'm driving, and so if I come up with these committees and think tanks on a Wednesday, because it's closed. No, it's not costing us.
No, no, I think, I think that's great.
But it could give you traction for the road, I mean, that's gonna, that's gonna be expensive to build a road around there, and maybe those kind of things would help sell it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But even Pirate Rec, I mean, they do do a good job, they've always been, they use everything, and I'm not trying to be. That is a multi-town organization.
Sure.
So it's Sangerville, it's Guilford, it's Parkman, it's Abbott.
Right.
Everybody is there, so, yes, they do do things here, but Guilford has a very nice, set of nice fields too. So, and Parkman, actually, Parkman redid all of their fields to try to get Pirate Rec to use those more. Because just spread this out, instead of all the parents always having to drive Sangerville.
Sure.
Some could go for different things, so. Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, I think, without trying to be mean or rude to Pirate Rec, to cut them back some. If you did develop things like that, there is other resources for Pirate Rec to do some of their things as well. They don't have to do everything in Sangerville.
Right. Well, I'll just start it.
Yeah, it's Florida.
See where it goes.
See how much interest is.
You're not getting a phone call saying, did you know town manager just did the.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I think that's great.
Enjoy.
When I get those phone calls, just, you know, yeah, I already knew that. Hey, Pat, what are you doing?
Oh, good, good, alright, well, I'll, I'll drive the train, I already got a couple people that, uh, showed interest.
That's great, that's.
Uh, if we're good with, with the strategic plan, I guess, it says town manager report, it should be, I guess, the strategic plan. Uh, we'll move into road commission report, uh, three gravel roads, not last week, week before, washed out, right? Uh, Bean Hill, Townhouse, and, uh.
Yeah, Flint Hill Road, that's already called it under mine. Three inches, it took a rate to the bottom of that up top, and the doze was up on the hill, so we ran it down over the backside of the mountain.
Yeah.
Busting it all up and.
Uh, but.
All the way went into that thing.
But I'm correct to say.
It's a chance.
That was a, a, so the third and fourth order of effect was, there was a couple culvers that we, that didn't get fixed. On Silver's Mills Road, because you jumped down there to take care of the, the gravel roads, is what I understood.
We work on it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh, we've just done two culverts on the Silver's Mills Road.
Yeah.
Right at Bob Brown's house.
Yeah.
On top of the hill by Wilson Howell's old place.
Uh, my Jeep didn't jump sideways last night when I rode over it, first time in three, four years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, I don't think there's any question of what is being done, I think, you know, I just wanted to give an update that, you know, if somebody was to call and say. How it was supposed to be done last week, well, it wasn't done because the guys had to jump over and take care of a couple gravel roads.
We still got. Borough Road over there, it's all washed to pieces, but it's just a big wash.
Yeah.
Cause the road is inverted.
Okay.
Just can't get out of the road, you know, we've got ledge sticking out of the road over there that's catching the balls on.
Is that by that bog here, or is that?
It's just actually going around the sharp corner of the ten ton bridge.
Yeah.
We jump up.
Yeah.
Ledge is right there on the right.
Okay, I know.
And that whole hill rolling out.
Yeah.
It's all just, all the water's coming down the road. There's just nothing there, but we just, uh, put more gravel on the. Line road today. Chris Russell trucking the day, I, I've been in the road grader all day.
Correct.
Trying to get that bump out of there, and we gotta put another load or two on that, cause we got some big rock, gonna stick it up. Chris broke the cotton hedge on the grader, random cotton hedge, so I had bolted it, broke the end off of it. So I, I found it again. So burying those up, but we're not putting any gravel down on the bad pad of the road we're asking to re. You know, I've just cut it and frowning it.
Yeah, yeah.
Not gonna.
Yeah.
Waste any gravel on that piece, we're putting it other places where the road is still, doesn't need to be rebuilt, just needs gravel. So that's what we're doing over there, another load or two over there in the morning, then we're gonna move down onto the Borough Road. But what Chris is in my concern, I, is, uh, the gravel roads are such poor shape, they're, they're the hardest roads for us to plow. Uh, we really would like to do the Silver's Mills Road to completion yet, but. It's, it's a dollars and cents thing, it's either gonna get, that's gonna get done, or gravel roads, uh, weren't done. And your biggest complaints are the gravel roads, I believe.
Yeah, I, I mean.
We, we wanna pave in what we've, our culverts that are open.
Yeah.
We wanna pave those in and fix our big sinkholes going up by Bob Brown's lawn, where those are. Just gone, that needs some material put in there and then patch that in to get through, but, uh.
How far north are you gonna be done?
On Silver's Mills?
Yeah.
We were just gonna go to Jerry Peters.
Okay.
To meet where we, uh, the end of the new piece.
But there's, there's more, there's more to be done, we're stopping at Jerry's this year.
Oh, yeah, there's more.
There's, how many culverts do you?
Oh, no, culvert wise, I think.
Culvert wise, we just have that one right by, uh, Christie's.
You're taking that one out, right?
Taking it out, I don't think it's still talking about putting in like a four inch piece of schedule in, but I.
I'd take it out.
I'd say take it out, put the clay to the edge of the road on the field side.
I mean.
To help hold water back, cause it's not that much water.
For me, that culvert is no different than if you would have put a culvert after my house.
Bingo.
It's the same scenario, Jerry's lawn floods a little bit, and it goes away, it's no different than my lawn, I get water a little bit, and it goes away. But it's only, it's those three or four times a year, then when you get astronomical.
So is there ditching to be done? On, is, is all the ditching done on Silver's Mills?
No.
Uh. That piece that we're working on, it's just, we need a little bit right by Jerry Walkler's driveway, water pools up there. And we don't know if it's ledge, contending with that, why that's doing that, or what. But I talked with Jerry the other day, and he said, in the winter time, but it's got a lot of water there, he plows the water over the hill.
Yeah.
Gets it down over the hill, gets it out of the way, but, you know, I shouldn't have to do that. But other than that little stretch right there, up to that culvert we just changed last, from Jerry's driveway to there, that's. And, and a little bit down over the hill, the culvert that goes into the, the fields, just before. Bob's culvert we did. The fields, just before Bob's column that we did. That culvert fell up in the water, went over the road there, but just badly cut it, I I hand dug that all out, get that culvert open again. But we need to do a little bit of ditching up through there to make it flow better, but it's, there a little ditching needs to be done, just a couple hours.
Well, that's part of the last one, is Chris is gonna come meet with me this week, and we're gonna discuss. Projecting work and required work, you know, and how we do the project management of what's coming, you know? Is it gonna be to seal over what we've already done, so we can move over to the gravel roads and and those type things, so Chris and I are gonna come talk.
We'd like to. You know, mothball the tire road, fix it, pave in the culvert bumps, you know, all the way up through. Continue on the gravel, because then the then the rest roads cross the plot. And people complaining and and working on it in the middle of the winter, it's not.
He's got one that, we got one that's caved in on the Francis Mills Road. If we can get that out, when we do the trench paving.
That's what I, that's, I mean, obviously, I hate your idea, probably more than anybody sitting here, because I get stuck driving over it, but. But at the same token, I also know that we really neglected our dirt roads for the last seven or eight years. I mean, even Townhouse, Townhouse, we didn't even talk about that, but Townhouse needs gravel, I mean, you got fabric showing over there. You got Anderson, you guys started on it, we didn't finish that one. You've got.
We've just been hitting the bad spots.
Hundred percent, but that's what I'm trying to say, if that is the focus to actually get them cleaned up.
Then let's do the focus.
So we're trying to hit the bad spots right now, just to hold them from when we get the heavy rains in the winter and stuff, it's just wiping them right out.
But the only thing is, I think that, like Mike spoke about, you know, that. Even, I don't want to abandon the hot tops to the point, that one over that's in on his road, I didn't realize, I never. That is just, I can't believe we have that more, that's astronomical.
That's gonna go in.
It's going in, yes.
I I went over yesterday with my pickup, it's like, holy crap, my wheels off.
And the other one too, and it's not even a culvert, but we gotta figure out if we're gonna temporary. The one after the old Walton property, that's not even a culvert, I don't know what that is.
So is.
Up front of the bank.
Yes, is there a.
We we need to, yes, we need to blend that in.
Something.
While we're doing the culvert, is there is there a way that. You, we can find somebody to subcontract under you to to do some of this other stuff? So that it's getting.
We're running out of time.
That's my thing, is, so either, either we, you know.
I understood it was a dollars and cents thing too.
Well, the only thing, so the only thing I want to, glad you said that, so the only thing that I'm concerned about. Did we do as paving on the?
No, I don't believe we did.
No, it's road maintenance.
Okay.
It was a request for additional funds.
For paving, I thought.
And that was a separate article, so we need to make sure how that's worded.
Look at it tomorrow and I'll see.
It'll be right in your town report.
It it will be written in the.
I almost want to say that it's road maintenance now.
Oh, I hope so, I just, we just wanted.
I'm not gonna argue, but I want to just be sure.
Right, no, 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 I.
Foul.
Correct, and that's all I don't want.
And that's all they're taking for a month year end.
That Flanders Hill washout too, that, we can't go another winter without addressing that.
I don't know, so that that culvert's gonna have to come out, put in a bigger culvert. But it's like you did the rest of them.
We've got a special, we've got a special coming up in forty-five days, we can, we can shuffle funds. Now, we're we're running out of weather, but it'll be mid-October.
You can buy an awful lot of gravel and a lot of culverts for the price of hot top.
Yes, you can, yes, you can.
So, you know, that's a big budget if you're gonna do the gravel roads.
Right now, we're a month ahead of what we were, we're working on the hot top road last year.
So I think.
Which is still late.
I owe the, what is, what is the fun category?
Um, road maintenance, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I I owe that, and and then the decision will become more, how how do we get somebody to come support? Getting it done, as, you know, do you, do you bill us and then cut them whatever into it? Or however that needs to work?
Because like last year, you guys hired trucks.
We hired Jackson's trucks, and and Matt asked, he hired trucks.
He had three trucks last.
Yeah. And they're, and they're grading and then doing spreader chains, I'm just saying, if you need an operator, I can come out of some shorts and put some steel toes on in a second. Just saying.
I'd be careful.
You might be working all that, you might be bailing hat.
You could be definitely last year running the Detroit.
I I'm just saying I know a guy, I seen him once or twice. I got, I got more hours in an excavator than a pilot at American Airlines, I'm just saying.
But I think your point, Patrick, is that we may need to up the manpower or person power.
How to refund it.
Yeah, and and.
We've got the money.
You can, you can do it two ways, you can either just, another contractor through the town, or they just funnel it all through them, they build.
Right, right.
They've done it both ways.
Chris is finishing up his his hay here right now, finally, and we got. Just less more to go, our red dump truck has been sitting there, and we decided we're gonna put the fifth wheel on that, instead of going with the tractor truck we were working on. So we can haul our dump trail, so we can get two loads at a time instead of one load with that truck, so that'll be like having three trucks on the road.
So Chris and I are gonna sit down tomorrow and go over these items are programmed and what we need to program and, you know. What what the phone a friend program looks like.
Right, right, right.
I haven't got a lot of detail yet, and I can't remember the name, but I'll try to get you one soon. But the gentleman that was interested in purchasing the town garage there. So he's a big contractor out in New Hampshire, he's retired, his family's. And he's bringing a lot of, some of his equipment up here to start doing some things, maybe some ditching or. I'm not exactly sure what level or what, um, I already heard that he has. An excavator with a big flail grinder on it, like what we used to have before, do our some of our moment, so I guess he's got something like that that could. Might be useful for us and maybe some other stuff, so as soon as I can get his number, I will give it to you and.
And it might be one of those things where you bill us for the time being, and then pay him, he subcontracts for you. Because I don't know said individual.
None of us do. None of us do.
But all you, all you gotta do is get, is just like any other contractor, you just gotta get their li- their.
Yeah, gotta be properly insured.
Once you have that, just cut the check.
Did you, has he moved up?
Well, Chris and I will program everything tomorrow and go through the gamut and see where it is you guys can handle it. And where you need us or me to help, start calling help in, or do I need to just make sure it's getting done, some other avenue? That's all. That's it for Patrick.
Okay.
So what's concerns?
I don't have any.
Hearing, seeing none?
I have a list. But I'm gonna hand it to Patrick.
Okay.
So honestly, it's not a, it's not a concern list, but I, when we talk about this and all the plates that. Have any out there, I. Those are the plates that I could think about that are out there, some of them you've actually touched on tonight already, and a lot of them you haven't, so.
There you go, that's awesome.
That would be a nice Wednesday coffee.
Oh, there you go.
So some of it's pretty easy self-explanatory, some of it, but. But I don't, we don't need to go through the whole thing though.
Nope, I I'll put it on and I'll start programming it on priorities and one end list.
As you're gonna have through, you're gonna see, some of these are over here priorities, they're not highs, but some of it is just FYI things that.
Did you prioritize it or not?
I did not prioritize anything, I just, that was just a list.
Okay, just off the top of your head?
That's exactly what I needed.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second?
It's five fifty-nine, we are adjourned.